Okay, we're ready, Mr. Vice President.
I'd like to say good morning to everyone. Today is Tuesday, March the 2nd, 2021, and this is our pre-conference. Our President, Levon Manzi, will not be present for a pre-conference, but will be present for the regular meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in the hands of our capable City Clerk, Ms. Lisa Carol Lambert.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, March 2nd. We have approval of minutes from February 23rd.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appeals, we have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance. And this is on March 30th, from 5:00 to 8:30 PM. This is in Cooper Riverside Park. We have requests for waves of noise ordinance on April the 4th, on Cottage Hill Road, from 5:00 until 11:00. That's gotta be wrong. Yeah, that's... Look that up. And then we have...
Isn't that the church?
Yes, the church.
Easter.
So the sunrise service?
Oh, Easter's the sunrise service. Okay, yeah, that's correct. Yeah, 5:00 AM until 11:00 AM. That's the Easter sunrise service on April the 4th. And then March 14th, from 4:00 PM until 10:00 PM. And this is at Crawford Place, on Crawford Place, District 1. Public hearing. Today is a public hearing to rezone property located at 5,001 and 5,009 Cottage Hill Road, southwest corner of Cottage Hill Road and North Demetropolis Road, from R1 and B2 to B2.
Ma'am clerk, go back to the one, Crawford Place. That's, that direction, that's District 2.
Which one?
Oh, okay. District 2.
Mm-hmm. Crawford Place.
Okay. And a discussion on the public hearing, Mr. Davis, the rezoning. Okay. Public hearing to fix the cost of the demolition of the structure at 2056 General Gargus Drive North. Okay, 374 Dunbar Street. And 1220 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, 613 Belsaw Avenue, 800 Hockum Avenue. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Reggie Hill... Did he? And Ben Reynolds regarding the... Okay, Reggie Hill would like to address the council regarding the structures, the demolition of the structures, and 34003, 21127, 38015, 65017, 03138, and 21141. And we'll leave those out again at 10:30. And Ben Reynolds would like to address the council regarding 34003, and that's the ordinance to amend Chapter 34.
He may not be here, Madam Clerk, especially since we do not have the changes that were addressed in committee. We're gonna have to see how much is brought forward to us. I'll yield to the Finance Committee Chair and our attorney with their... But I would say we're gonna at least have to put this off another week.
I think that's correct. My recollection of the committee meeting was that we had asked Mr. Roberts and Ms. Kessler to go back to the drawing board and see if they could come up with a, some language that might make it easier for people to register multiple properties. In that, in that what we decided.
Essentially, yes. And so I think there's gonna be some discussion about how people are charged, if they have an option or not, and then... But it's, they've still got some work to do. We gotta update you. The committee was sent an update this morning by Mr. Roberts.
Okay, how long? Do we need a week, or do we need two weeks? What do we need?
Oh, well, that's, I have no knowledge. I mean, you know, 8 o'clock this morning, we got a spreadsheet. And that's only part of the issue. So they gotta work out the mechanics and enforcement and how they're gonna do it.
Let's give them two weeks and be done with.
They gotta get done to be done.
I think two weeks is probably a really good idea, just so we get you all the documents in time. This is Ricardo speaking. We'll get you all, not only the documents, so that way you all not rushed to looking at it, but just for informational purposes, what we're going back and doing is combining Mr. Reynolds' idea with Mr. Williams' idea of creating one application where the business owner only has to complete that one application and involve multiple property. And so it's not so onerous for them. But we've gotta make sure that at least everybody's on the same page. So two weeks is probably more than, more than enough, but I'd like to do that.
And, you know, we're kind of skipping forward a little bit in the sense that I was just mentioning that Mr. Reynolds probably would not join us today, because we're not yet to that ordinance on the, on the agenda. It's next. But since we're there, I just asked that, there's a part of a business license where you have to place it in a conspicuous place, at the place of business, at the location of the business, or where businesses die. And we certainly would not want it on the front door of our rental house if we were renting. And then there's a provision where the revenue director can essentially demand entry into a place of business to inspect the business, to determine its, its compliance with, with its license and zoning and all of that. And so we wouldn't want that either in a, in a residential location. So I've just asked to look at those two things as well as we go forward.
Can I ask a question of the committee chair?
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. Joel, do you anticipate another committee meeting to go over these changes that are being recommended? I know you're getting the dialogue back and forth, but the council will be asked to vote on the entire, you know, ordinance.
I, I'm beginning to think that it's going to be inevitable, but let's just hold it over for two weeks and see what happens.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I wanted to see about asking the city attorney this question. With other cities, Mr. Woods, if you're still there, that does business license with rental properties, are they doing it, how are they doing it? Are they doing the same thing, way? Are we anticipating in doing as in one license, or do they do multiple licenses, or are we the first?
The state law requires multiple licenses for business locations, but some people, so it's done in different ways. It's, I can probably get you the information. I'll show you how different people do it. But state law does require each specific location to have a separate business license.
But is all other cities are doing exactly the same? I mean, if the state requires for each separate license, so how are we going to go by and just, and do one combined license? I mean, or...
It's not, it's, it's, good question, really good question. So it's not one combined license, it's one combined application. So when we spoke to Mr. Reynolds, what he suggested was having an affidavit that listed everything, because that's what people would normally do. But what we're saying is, in order to make it convenient for the business owner, you submit one application for all of the properties. So you would provide a spreadsheet. And what we're doing is combining Mr. Reynolds' ideas with our practices. So it's not so cumbersome for them. This is, this is new. Most people don't do it this way. But what we're doing is complying with state law and making sure that our practices line up with the ordinance.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a question of, of Mr. Woods. Right now, if you have more than 10 units, you get a business license, but that could be your business that all 10 are, or 12 or 15 are together? Or do you get separate business licenses for each of those different units?
Good question also. So the law requires you to get a separate business license for everyone. The practice is people more than likely get one. I mean, I'll give you a good example. If, if anybody owns a separate location and a business person, you've gotta get a separate business license for each one of those locations. If you have professionals, and they can all even be in the same building, they're going to have to get separate business licenses. So if, I guess it's a law firm. Law firm that has 25 lawyers, they have 26 business licenses.
But, Mr. Woods, I agree with you.
But the thing is, you're talking about the units of rental. You're not talking about the, the application of the business, because that's true in medical offices too, whether they own the building or rent. But I, I mean, is there a way to apply what is already going on for people that have multiple?
That's what we're doing. That's, what we're doing is, is creating one application for all of the properties. And then we would issue multiple licenses through that one application and the submission. So that's, that's a good question, but that's, I think that was Mr. Williams' point when Mr. Reynolds brought it up. We didn't want somebody filling out 75 business license applications.
We're gonna have a committee meeting.
Well, if you apply the theory about lawyers, or doctors, or pharmacists, whatever, they come in and get a business license, but they do that on their own. So you're not asking the renter to get a business license, because it's not their business.
Correct. Absolutely correct. It's, it's the owner, and so we have the, the information there. But you're, you're correct.
Okay. All right.
We're gonna have a committee meeting on this now.
Hey, Fred, that's not a known deal. We want to continue.
We're not gonna vote on it.
Well...
We're not voting on it today.
So, it doesn't stop you from talking.
It doesn't stop you.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. All right. Madam Clerk?
57009, ordinance to amend Chapter 57, Article 8 of the city code, and to add a new Article 9, small cell facilities on public rights away.
Ms. Rich, you have anything?
Yeah. Well, you saw my emails about the spacing, especially in residential corridors or zoned areas. Is there any additional concerns that council members might have about the 200 feet in a residential area? Could we look at, based on zoning, to do them further apart, at least for residential? I, I think it's really, that, that's the big angst I have, is every 200 feet, they can be as tall as 35 feet. I mean, that's, we, your preamble talks about the aesthetics and our beautiful street line, but then you read the ordinance and it's done looks so beautiful, at least in residential areas, where it will really stick out. There, there isn't a lot of places that they can attach to.
Councilman Small, this is Flo Kessler. Can I address that point for a minute, please?
Good, Gina's got her hand up. Let's watch the council.
Just one second. It's Flo, Gina. Gina?
Did you want me to go? Okay. And Flo may answer this when she speaks, but I've, I've read Beth's emails, and I understand and agree with her to a large extent on the aesthetics and what we need to do. But help me understand exactly, you know, state law and what we're doing here, because the way I thought we were moving forward is, we have to meet a certain date in order to get our ordinance in place, so that the state doesn't trump us. But whatever we pass doesn't mean that it has to stay that way forever. So we could get something passed in order to beat the state deadline and then come back and change it if we needed to. Am I, am I correct?
We're gonna hear from Ms. Flo. Then we'll hear from our attorney. Ms. Flo?
Yeah. To start with, the last question, yes, that, that is correct. And to address Ms. Rich's point, I wanted to just say a word about the 200 feet that's in the ordinance before you. That was the recommendation of the right-of-way department after looking at ordinances all over the state. However, I think that 300 feet is a defensible spacing requirement. And if the council chooses to change the 200 feet to 300 feet, I, I don't think that there's any problem with that at all. So, you know, I, I think that that, that's certainly a council option. My only concern is just what Councilwoman Gregory just mentioned, is just making sure that the ordinance is adopted timely. And May 1st is the absolute drop-dead date under state law. So I would, I would think that, that, you know, that it, considering publication, considering that things always go wrong when you have a deadline, that, you know, I would hope to see the council act absolutely no later than April 1st. And, and that would be my recommendation. But if, if the council wants to lay this over one more week, and I can work with the council attorney to brush up the draft, change the 200 feet to 300 feet, if that's the desire of the council, maybe we can have something that's ready for the council action next week.
Yeah. CJ?
Ms. Gregory?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's great, Flo, and I really appreciate it. What we're going up against is a deadline, and we just need to have something in place so that we have our ordinance. And it may not be perfect, because what Beth wants to do, we want to look at the aesthetics and, and making sure that whatever we have in place permanently is, is what we can all live with and what is in the best interest of our neighborhoods. So the initial ordinance may be, you know, it may have some of the things in there, but it will beat the state deadline. That's what we're going up against. And then we can come back and make some more changes that we really want to see in it. We just have to make sure that the state doesn't trump us, because if that happens, then, you know, we're out of luck.
Hey, Chris, what are you talking?
Yeah, Mr. Archer.
I was just gonna kind of say what Flo said. If it's just the 300 feet, I got an email from her, like she said, explaining how the 200 came about. And if it's just the 300 that's the issue, then, you know, we could change that between the council meetings if you want to, but if it's a bunch of other stuff, you know, that's different.
I agree with him.
What, what about the height of the poles in residential area? Do we have some comparison? I wasn't able to find that in some of the other ordinances, and I probably just don't know where to look.
From what I saw, they're about 50.
Beg your pardon?
From what I saw, 50 is kind of the rule of thumb, 50 feet.
What about residential areas?
Just all areas. And then there was some variation, maybe possibly 10% difference, it, depending on what the other poles were in the surrounding areas.
Right. To keep it more in line with what is already characteristic, and, and especially in neighborhoods. Can you write it so that it, when you look at zoning, which is, you know, certainly something allowed by law, where it is different in the R1 situation, so that it applies, you know, citywide, as far as the height, the, the spacing?
That kind of, I mean, it can be changed any way you want to, but that kind of thing is gonna take a lot more deeper thought.
What, to, to just isolate R1 for spacing and heights?
If you change one thing...
If you're talking about the aesthetics and the character, how does a 35 or a 50-foot pole fit every, you know, well, at least there's the thought that we would go 300 feet, but was Huntsville 1,000 feet in residential areas?
No, that was an opinion article by the mayor. That wasn't the actual...
Okay.
But my point is...
Well, we'll probably need to look at Huntsville, because obviously they were concerned about their neighborhoods. That, that's, to me, you can blend these things in on our big streets and our corridors and in, in business areas. It's really keeping the aesthetics and the character of all our neighborhoods, so as not to... And, and that seems to be the number one problem that, that cities are dealing with. Those are, those are the complaints. If we can get ahead of it, we should.
Mr. Vice President?
It's gonna be Mr. Williams, then you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Rich, are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think what our goal, thank you, is, is that we provide some guidelines of no, no less than, no higher than. But it, it's my understanding, and I'll wait for answer, I'll ask two things, is that there is an approval process, that they still have to get their, their plan for distribution approved by the, by the administration. So there, there still is a check there. Flo said 300 is defensible, defensible, I believe. And I just wonder if she might expound on that, why, why she thought that that was the case.
Councilman Williams, that, there are, as Chris Arlich said, other municipalities that use the 300 feet spacing, Huntsville, Birmingham, and, and a number of others. We looked at 200 as an average. That was the recommendation of the right-of-way department. But I think it's defensible, because I think other large municipalities have adopted that rule, and, and it's been reviewed and approved.
Yes, I just, as Ms. Rich was talking, and these things seem to happen. I don't know if it's addressed in there. I don't want one right next to my water meter, right in the middle of my yard, anytime. First of all, I mean, I just think they're gonna get, there's gonna be some serious damage to all of that. And it, they probably need to be co-located, you know, a minimum of such and such, and co-located with existing right-of-way utility post, if y'all are following where I'm going with that. Either that green box or the little stub up by Comcast, whoever it is. But if they, if they were to put it in the middle of my yard that I'm maintaining by, by policy, that could be a problem.
You finished, Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
I just want to go back to what Ms. Gregory pointed out, that, that we do have, and Ms. Kessler, is there is a, there is a time constraint here. And to me, the, the best path forward is to go ahead and change the language to 300 feet, go ahead and pass it, make sure we protect our ability to deal with ourselves, instead of having the legislature deal with it. We can get all tied up in knits and, and now, and, and spend as much time as we want to. The time to spend as much time as we want to is after we have enacted something, and, and not while we're trying to beat this deadline. And I'm, and let me say, I'm fully supportive of us pushing the envelope as far as we can get that's defensible, is, in terms of spacing and height and all the rest of it. But, but I, but from what, what I understand from all these discussions we've had is, the first thing we need to do is secure our right to act within the confines of the federal legislation, whatever that is. That's the first thing we have to do before we get preempted by the state.
I have one more if it'll mind, if I could be short.
Mr. Williams?
And then, and this is for, for Flo or Ricardo. What could delay this? First of all, we have to act. We have to vote. Then there is a, a certain amount of notice. If someone decides to appeal, such as one of these companies that wants not to be constricted, can they delay our, our action, or is once we vote, that we are protected under the deadline that we're talking about?
Councilman Williams, I, I'm happy to hear Mr. Arlich's opinion on that question, but to me, the council needs to adopt the ordinance. It is, the reason I mentioned publication is that it's a long ordinance, and sometimes that, you know, you just run into technical problems at the last minute on publication. And, you know, as you know, if you push a deadline, anything that can go wrong will. So I, I just was recommending a very comfortable period to go through the adoption period.
Yeah, I, I understand that, you know, I'm ready to vote on the 300 and move toward, you know, further discussions. But I just want to make sure that we all understand that there could be a, there could be some other delays that we, we don't have as much time as it may appear.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Richardson?
I agree with Joel.
There, then let's just act, my lord.
That doesn't happen very often, colleagues.
Ninety-nine percent of the things we vote on, we all vote together.
When you said that, I had just taken a sip of coffee, and that was, that was, that was...
And other council members? And Mr. Archer, you think you can get that changed by 10:30 and send out?
Yes, sir. We'll get to 300 feet.
Okay. Anything from the administration? If not, Ms. Lambert?
64012, ordinance to amend Chapter 64 of the city code to delete Section 64.4.8 tree protection requirements.
Councilmember? Ms. Gregory?
Okay.
Yeah, turn your mic on, Ms. Gregory.
Yeah. We have a committee meeting scheduled for next Tuesday to go over Chapter 65 and how we want to make changes in it. You know, we've been working on that. What this is, is basically taking Chapter 64 and taking it out of the zoning ordinance. And then further down the agenda, you'll see, creating Chapter 65, which is what we talked about doing last week. So it's a little confusing, because we've got a lot of moving pieces and parts here. And Chris may need to help explain better, but that's what we're doing, just moving 64 out of zoning, putting it in its own 65 as it is today. So what you'll see on Chapter 65 on the agenda today mirrors what's already in the zoning ordinance now, Chapter 64H. There's no changes. But we are in the process of working toward making changes on Chapter 65, as we got from the administration. So all of that is in motion.
Mr. Archer, did you want to have any input on that?
Yes, sir. So the 6412 is moving it out of the chapter. And then on the new items, what's the number, 6517 is creating a new chapter for the existing ordinance that's being moved. And I think I told you all that they did fix the appeals process, which is currently not following the law. And so that's the major, really the only major change. And so you would basically have a status quo, but to adopt the first one I mentioned today, you would also want to go immediate consideration on the second one, otherwise we'll be without a tree ordinance for a week.
Everyone okay with taking that one up, taking up 65107 today?
It's been around.
Wait a minute. Are we not supposed to do it so that we don't have something in its place? I, I guess I'm missing some points here. So we have to hold it up till the committee meeting?
Now, we would have something in its place. We would have 6517 in its place. And then we go to committee meeting and continue working on amending 6517. Because 6517 is basically what is in the zoning ordinance now, with the change that Chris mentioned, which is the appeals process.
And it doesn't, it doesn't include additional species or sizes of trees? None of that?
The new one, the new one won't have any new ones either.
Well, that's what we're...
We're bringing the, holding... We're not making any changes to protecting trees. We're not making any changes to protecting trees.
No, we're just taking it out of sixty-four and putting it in sixty-five.
That's all we did.
And then, and then there's gonna, then there's gonna be additional work on the new sixty-five. We talked about this last week, that all we're just gonna do is move it this week, and that would give us time to go into the substance of it, uh, next week at the committee meeting.
I'd say we take them to get, we, we need to either, we need to take them together so that we don't end up without an ordinance because we have.
Let's, let's just take, let's just take up sixty-five oh one seven today.
Just need to go together.
Yeah, so Joel, you gonna take care of that?
Yes, I'll make that motion when we get there.
Okay.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah, so we have the committee meeting next week at two o'clock, one o'clock. I can't remember, was it two o'clock or one o'clock, Lisa? But we have the committee meeting next week, um, I think it's at one o'clock, uh, to continue talking about sixty-five. We had a lot of people interested in it, and I'm sure we'll have some folks sign up to speak. But, um, that's what the meeting is for next week, to continue talking about the, uh, proposed ordinance that Peter Toler and the administration sent, as well as comments that we have received from the public.
At one o'clock?
At one o'clock.
Okay, I thought it was one o'clock, I just couldn't remember, didn't have it in front of me. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Kerr, how if I draw up a scenario? If we were to drop it, drop the thirty-four, in other words, delete thirty-four. Um, and then we move on to the, um, the next section, and unanimous consent is withheld, we're gonna be without an ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to see.
Either we need to vote on them at the same time, or the first need to be a conditional that we pass the next. Or next week to vote on both of them.
That's it from Chris.
Yeah, yeah, one second, Ms. Rich, did you have some concern?
Yeah, because you're basically bringing out, uh, a code that we know people want to see changed. I, I appreciate the fact that you, you wanna do this now, but the whole idea was to have a new code in place. And it, you're basically telling the community, we're, we're not doing that now. And March ninth is next week for the committee meeting, which means we're not prepared next week to fix it. And, and you keep dragging it.
We're, we're, all we're doing is taking, we're taking, we're taking it out of one section of the code and putting it into, in another section. There's gonna be, if we take it out, there's gonna be absolutely no lapse. And then we love substantive issues next week.
That's all we doing.
Okay, well, I'll just vote my conscience at this point, that's all. So look, I, I get it, I get what you're doing. But I feel like we started out telling people that all this would be in one action. And, and it's, we're, we're not doing it in one act. There's no rush, there's not like we're under any kind of deadline, like we are with the small cell, um, out of the state house. No, no one is, and the community is very engaged in protecting trees, especially when it comes to development on commercial property. We know we're not gonna touch residential, people can do what they want on their residential because there was talked about at one point, there was an interest from those that came to, to look at residential protection. But it's mostly talking about which trees are we protecting and what size? And I, and just putting this, tucking this old one into a new number, then we could basically throw our hands up and be done if there aren't, you know, five council people to make the changes. The whole idea is to bring them together. I mean, I thought that's what we told the community.
Ms. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Richardson?
Whether it's in sixty-four, sixty-five, five members can stop it, can stop any changes. What is in sixty-four, sixty-five? Three, so we got, we got a chair. And the chair of the committee says she's gonna hold a meeting on all of what, uh, Beth is talking about. All we are doing now, we, we already said we're gonna get rid of chapter sixty-four and create a new chapter sixty-five. So that's what we ought to do today. Get rid of sixty-four, create sixty-five. And every, everything else we want to do in sixty-five, want to amend, we have the authority to amend. What, what you said, leave it in sixty-four and amend it in sixty-four and take the sixty-five. Amending is amending, whether it's in sixty-four, sixty-five. Get rid of sixty-four, create sixty-five. And then next week, the chair is gonna hold a committee meeting on trees or whatever else you wanna do with sixty-five. I just don't see how that can harm any citizens out there who want more input. You have a chance to, to sign up and say anything you want about trees. This won't stop any discussion on the tree.
And, and.
Uh, Mr. Dave, then Ms. Gregory?
Look, it's gonna take unanimous consent for us to take up.
Hello?
Sixty-five zero one seven today. So if we don't have unanimous consent to take up sixty-five zero one seven today, then we can't get out of sixty-four and add sixty-five today, which is another thing we don't wanna do. So if, 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 unless we have unanimous consent to take up sixty-five one oh seven today, we need to hold over sixty-four zero one-two.
Right.
That was the whole idea.
Where you get?
But.
Gregory?
Yeah, I understand what, where Beth is coming from because she's on the committee with me. And we have been through a, a very long meeting along with Mr. Richardson, um, talking about, uh, chapter sixty-five, which will be a new ordinance. And we've been listening to the community, listening to council members. And we have something of a, a working draft that we've been looking at, that we will continue looking at. Doing what is on the agenda today, as Chris has suggested, just makes it simpler. You know, we don't have to keep talking about moving sixty-four into sixty-five, and then we have a new sixty-five. We've, we've got chapter sixty-four, which include, which is the tree ordinance portion of zoning. But we are creating a new sixty-five. So I just think it is simpler to go ahead and move it, and then we continue working on how or if, you know, we amend sixty-five. It's the same thing. We are not saying that once we move sixty-four into sixty-five, we're done, we're throwing our hands up. No, we continue the process.
And other council members?
Well, well, it's don't need, if, if Beth's not gonna agree with this, uh, we may as well lay over.
There, there are six council members, I'm listening very carefully, that wanna see the swap out. So I will not hold up unanimous consent on you doing such. But I just feel you've told the community, and they understood because they were very concerned that moving it out of the zoning code and then taking what we know is not a really fine protection of our tree canopy and our rights away and in, in development, and putting an old one in its place. So that you, you, I feel like I'm risking the opportunity to strengthen and protect the trees that out in West Mobile and commercial development rings my phone exponentially when people see the, the lots clear cut, when there were other types of trees that could have been protected, that were not in the footprint, we're not asking developers to do anything that's, um, difficult. It's just really protecting the canopy of mature trees that we lost and continue to lose. So I risk the chance that when it's, when the old code is rested in what is now a new code, it not only, it's weakened, it's not held together. And, um, you know, I don't know if there's five council members. I, I thought the committee was pretty gelled up to listen to the community and work and make sure, we worked with our urban forester who's trained and understands protection and liability of trees that are in our rights away. He wants to protect that and protect the city. Because we've had, we, we have something on our agenda, it's a tree that fell. And, and we're, we're fixing that for the owner. Um, I think they lost their car. So, I mean, we haven't lost a life, but that's possible in some of our older trees that need protected. And all this was going to do that. So I just thought we were moving and gelling up and working with the community on both sides of the aisle and, uh, and respecting our urban forester, who has put a lot of time, energy and talent into trying to do the best he can for the protection of our trees. So, but I won't hold it up because if, if it's ready to move and, you know, this, as a committee member, I, I feel, I do feel offended that we're not working together to, to do it so that it's all one thing. And like I said, we're not under any, any, uh, timeline. If, if we don't change anything, it changes where, it stays where it is.
Uh, the, the new UDC, I think, does, i- is the consideration here that was presented to the planning commission on Thursday. Um, I think tha- that that's the, uh, desire of the administration is for that to be, uh, cleaned out before, before the new UDC comes for consideration.
Well, that hasn't even made it up to council yet.
Right, right. Mr. Chair?
Ms. Gregory?
I hear Mrs. Rich, and I agree with pretty much everything. Uh, I don't see us stopping. All we're doing is taking sixty-four out of zoning and putting it into the new sixty-five, where we will continue working on it. We've already sent out news releases about the committee meeting and what we're doing. So we have a working draft now for a new sixty-five that we will continue working on. We can put that on the agenda next week so that we have something on the agenda so that it doesn't get lost, if that makes everybody feel better, because we don't want it to get lost. We want to look at it, we want to hear from the community, as we have. Uh, I've been speaking with Peter Toler off and on for two weeks now about this. And I have him ready to come back and do the PowerPoint for us all so that we understand where the administration is coming from. I don't see this as stopping, I don't see this as taking anything away from the community. That is not what we are about. And if anybody has that, it's wrong. Um, so we will continue working on it next, next Tuesday, we continue working on sixty-five.
Well, but actions speak louder than words. And putting an old code into a new number does what the citizens were pretty concerned about. And so therefore, we're, we're not doing it in.
I know, I hear you, but we need to make sure to explain to everybody what we're doing and why. And if they have any concerns, we'll listen. But we start working on it again next Tuesday on the new chapter sixty-five, just like we have been. You know, and if y'all wanna keep it as it is and continue laying both of these over, fine. You know, whatever is the will of the council, you know. We're eventually going to have to look at sixty-five as we have been and decide what, if any amendments, we need to make, those that Peter Toler and the administration have recommended and those we get from the community, one way or the other.
Mr. Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Rich? Dave?
Okay, I wanna ask, um, uh, Chris this question. Chris, when we move sixty-four over to sixty-five, will we be substantially changing anything in sixty-four?
No, sir.
Will sixty, will sixty-five be the exact same as sixty-four when they get over there?
Except for the appeal process, yes.
Except for the appeal process. It'll be, we're not interfering with anything. So if you said, just leave sixty-four where it is, if we move it to sixty-five, it's still the same sixty-four. It's the same sixty-four.
This is not arguing.
You finished, Mr. Richardson?
That's all we trying to do though, that's all we're trying to do.
Mr. Dave?
I'm in, I'm in favor of, uh, I, I think it's, I think it's a lot easier to understand if we go ahead and move it out of sixty-four and create the new sixty-five, and then get to the substantive issues that, that are really the heart of the matter, instead of having the, instead of having those two go on at the same time. I think it's just gonna be a lot easier for everybody to understand.
Mr. Williams?
No, I just, uh, I'll, I'll wait till, till committee. Uh, just a couple of comments about residential that I don't know that are, that are absolutely true. It's they, you don't have a free rein to cut anything. You know, it just, once we get out of our right-of-way, that I, that I started getting a little bit concerned and with adding new species, uh, like a pine tree. Uh, pine trees threaten people's houses. And, and when that is determined by them to be a threat, they ought to be able to cut that pine tree. Uh, but we'll get to more of that discussion, thank you.
And other council members? So now, Madam Clerk?
Sixty-four zero one-three, ordinance to rezone property located at seven oh four Lakeside Drive West from B one and B two to B three. Eighty-eight zero one-four, order to authorize the sale of twenty-six sixty-two Filling Jim Street to Doris Bettis. Twenty-one one twenty-six, approved purchase order to Sun South for two Skitch deer loaders. Twenty-one one.
Is that, I have it on mine, it's zero-eight one twenty-six.
Oh, what did I say? I'm sorry. Oh, zero-eight one twenty-six.
Okay.
Okay, twenty-one one two-seven, authorized, uh, these are the new ones. Twenty-one one two-seven, authorized contract with Lane Federal Solutions for yes intern staffing services. Twenty-one one two-eight, authorized contract with Zeke Trice doing business road engineering and surveying for a survey of property south of Magnolia. Thirty-one one two-nine, authorized to give the year twenty staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant, stay for grant. Thirty-one one thirty, adopt the CDBG home and ESG twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one action plan. Essential COVID-nineteen items being introduced for the first time. Thirty-eight zero one-five, ordinance to amend section thirty-eight as twenty-four of the city code to permit the transfer of unclaimed property held by municipal court to the general fund.
Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, was to ask the administration, uh, Mr. Woods, can we get a little bit more information about this, please?
Absolutely. So, Mr. Small, what we have here is whenever somebody pays a bond and they're involved in municipal court and they leave it, typically the, the current ordinance is they would have a year to pick it up. Um, and what hap- what's happened in the past, and for most cities, is that that, those funds are shipped off to the state. Well, there's an AG's opinion that says we don't have to do that anymore and that the city can keep those, and we can keep them for the general fund or for the operation of the courts. So what we're asking the council to do is to change that ordinance from a one-sentence ordinance to a, a sentence, uh, to a more explicit ordinance that says, we're going to not only hold on to those funds for, uh, for the ten-year period until they can be picked up, so we give people more time to come pick up their money. But in the event they don't come pick it up, then it will transfer to the, the general fund.
Okay. Councilmember, you have any questions?
What was the theory about putting it into the general fund instead of back into the court system?
Just, just because if you look at all of this and, and how it works, um, it would, it could be directed anywhere, so that, that's ultimately up to you all at, at budget time. So we would said, look, let's just push it into the general fund. It's not like we were gonna direct by ordinance where funds come because that's a budget issue, not necessarily something for us to make a decision on right now.
And, and do you have an idea of what that funding source would be based on any historic information of people leaving funds for ten years?
Not really, but we are going to work on that number so that when, when it comes about, we'll have, we'll have that for you all. Um, typically, all of these funds have been shipped to the state. So you, you're starting from, basically starting from zero, um, or based on what we have now. So that's what we're working on for you all, uh, but making sure that it goes into the general fund. But our recommendation would be, of course, that it goes back into the court. In particular, it's partnered with two of the items that we have dealing with your adjunct and acting judges. But that's just, it just seems to make sense to do it that way.
Historically, how much money has been going up to the state that's been unclaimed?
Oh, that's the question that. We will have that information from you before you vote on it for next week. That's what we've been working on.
Okay, thank you.
And other council members? Thank you, Mr. Woods. Madam Clerk?
Um, sixty-four zero one-six, ordinance to rezone property located at five oh one five oh nine Cottage Hill Road from R one and B two to B two. Sixty-five zero one-seven, ordinance to create chapter sixty-five of the city code relating to tree protection and the mobile tree commitment. Zero one one three six, authorize. Zero one one three six, authorize a deal with Alabama Pipe and Supply Company for the EPA Gulf of Mexico Trash Free Waters Grant Project, seventy-five thousand, six hundred dollars.
What does that involve?
Nick?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Um, uh, we're on, uh, zero one one three six regarding the EPA Gulf of Mexico Trash Free Waters Grant Project.
I, I just didn't hear Councilor Rich's, uh, question.
What is?
She wanted more information on it.
Okay, okay. This, this is a material purchase, uh, of a sole source item, it's an MDI interceptor. It's basically a device that's put inside the, uh, the drainage inlets to collect, uh, floatable litter before it gets there. It's kind of a proprietary item that's being incorporated, uh, as part of that grant.
Okay, thank you.
What, what did you say, Ms. Rich?
I said, thank you.
Okay.
Oh.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rich.
Zero-three one three seven, concurring the reappointment of Larry Jackson to the Alta Point Health Board of Directors. Zero-three one three eight, appoint, um, Honorable Freddie Stokes to the position of adjunct judge of the Mobile Municipal Court. Zero-eight one three nine, approved purchase order to Donna Ho, Donna who? Uh, Shep, is it Ho who? Who? Donna who? Chevrolet four-three twenty-twenty-one Chevrolet Tahoe, um, police SUVs, one hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, seventy-eight cents. Zero-eight one four zero, approved purchase order to Dennis Aluminum Products for fifty decorative signposts, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Excuse me, on that one, can we know where they're going? I couldn't tell from what our information had.
On the signpost?
Yes.
They're going downtown.
Thank you. Is that someone's CIP money or is that a different funding source?
It's a different funding source.
This is it.
Twenty-one one four one, authorized performance contract with GCB Entertainment for the Gulf Coast Challenge, two hundred thousand. Twenty-one one four two, authorized contract with Rico Science for Trinity Gardens Park Dodge Community Center. Marquee sign replacement, seventy-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Twenty-one one four three, authorized contract with Bagman Russell Electric for an access control system upgrade at the Mobile Alabama Cruise Terminal. Fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Twenty-one one four four, authorized contract with Johnson Controls for ionization to replacement at Gulf Quest Maritime Museum, forty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. Twenty-one one four five, authorized contract with Ozark Striping Company for application of thermoplastic striping marking and legends on various city roadways, one million, forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Twenty-one one four six, authorized contract of Harris Contract.
Hold on, please, Gina has a question.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Gregory.
Yeah, since I heard Jennifer on the, uh, on the call, can we go back to twenty-one one forty-five and ask Jennifer if she will just explain what, uh, the thermoplastic striping is? Um, if it's different than what people ordinarily expect to see?
Yeah, we, we've been using thermoplastic for the last three bids, um, so basically the last three or four years on the striping, it's just a longer lasting product. It's, uh, basically melted plastic. It's common, we use it on all of our resurfacing projects too as the final paint striping.
Yeah, but some of this is going on older roadways, right? Not just the new resurfaced?
Yeah, it, it, it wasn't cost effective to break out and just do paint since paint life is only a year. Thermo, even on an older road, will give you four or five years of, uh, of good quality striping.
Thank you.
And how we, how we picking the, the streets? I mean, our intersections are horrible. If, uh, uh, that I, the fact that I can't direct anything is, uh, does not stop me from saying that I believe that we must address our major intersections where there is absolutely no striping. Um, and we can do without some striping in certain areas while, while we address that. Now, yield to the mayor on that, but boy, 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 we have got to fix some of our major intersections.
Uh, the striping contract includes the intersections when it includes the roadway, all the intersections are included also.
Yeah, I understand, but this million dollars is not gonna do our entire city, but yet, um.
We, we work on it every year kind of thing and, um, these are our worst condition roads as of last year. And so, and then this year we'll submit for our worst condition roads again. And we're trying to catch up between resurfacing and striping so that we have good quality everywhere.
And, and Mr. Mayor, my point is that, um, you know, it's nice to have them on these, um, on these older streets and, and I understand the worst shape. But there are intersections that need to be done, um, every year, uh, it is, you know, and it's thermal striping maybe every three years depending on their traffic. And, um, it, it is, it is critical that we make sure that our major intersections are covered all the time regardless of the shape of other, uh, streets. But that's, that's your decision.
You know, we, we can't take issue with that. I mean, what you're saying is exactly right. I'd have to get with Nick and, uh, maybe they can, uh, print out a list of where we intend to do it. Let you look at it and see, you know, bring, uh, bring to light those that you see that maybe we've overlooked and we can discuss that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gregory.
Yep, and I, and I agree with John too, but also, um, what we see in a lot of, especially the heavily trafficked corridors where the, the roads are a little older and it's dark because a lot of our street lights have yet to be changed out to LED and it's very dark. And when you start driving on some of these roads, especially in wet weather like we have now, it's very difficult for a lot of people to even see the side of the road so that when we get this striping on there, it gives them something to look at and it makes the driving safer. I've heard from a lot of, um, elderly residents that have a very difficult time maneuvering on some of these roads without, you know, good striping so that they can see where the roadway actually ends. So, you know, both things, uh, the intersections are very important, but we also have to keep up the striping on these major thoroughfares in particular to make it safer for everyone to, to get around.
Don't disagree.
I'd like to point, I'd like to point out on this contract that this is using an all-weather bead system, which, uh, we've just kind of started using. Um, I think Mobile should, should regularly use it given the amount of rain we get. But that all-weather bead reflects underwater, so when the striping is underwater, that all-weather bead is gonna help quite a bit.
It really makes a difference, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Um, and, and I'll echo the sentiments of my colleagues about the need for, um, restriping. Um, the city at one time had its own paint truck. I know we haven't done that in a number of years, broke down and whatever. Um, it was my understanding this company, um, it kind of corners the market in this thermoplastic kind of application, which of course is superior. But we have to still guide, you know, our drivers safely. So is there, uh, any kind of, um, program that would look at integrating not just the thermoplastic, which is a longer term and a better product? But looking at also painting so that the major intersections just never go, um, bare? Because I've written that out a lot, like I'm sure all of you have for drivers that complain. And, um, so I'm just wondering, and I know that for my office, the CIP funding to do some of the roadways in District Six are number of years of resources, not just, you know, one CIP role. So, um, I, I'm just wondering, we, we went through a pavement assessment. I don't think it takes an outside firm to look at our intersections and major corridors that need upgraded with, um, you know, striping. So is, is that an initiative, uh, for the staff and for the administration to look at?
Short answer is yes.
Okay, and, and so we can look forward to having, you know, the better resources out there at all times? Whether it's a painted line or thermoplastic?
We'll be looking at which locations are the best. Obviously, the thermoplastics may end the current paving contract, but we'll look at, as was pointed out by Councilman Williams and yourself, uh, which areas that we can get back and do, uh, repainting and some areas to enhance the painting in those intersections.
Let me, if I can, this is Nick, let, let me add that the striping is addressed on three, all right? So on the resurfacing projects, of course, they all get the all-weather beads as Jennifer, uh, declared or, 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 or made mention of on all the resurfacing projects. So these, once we're just restriping, we coordinate very closely to make sure that we're not gonna be restriping a road that will likely, it's either already in the contract for resurfacing or is likely a candidate in the very next year. Additionally, traffic engineering has crews that can do some small thermoplastic, uh, in places, small, in small locations. A- as Jennifer stated, the paint is just simply not a good product, it doesn't last.
I understand that. Uh, when I look at the list in District Six, I noticed there were threats that, uh, we are gonna be resurfacing or we just resurfaced. But the thermoplastics being added as coming out of the CIP money. So why wasn't it included in, in the original resurfacing? Lloyd's Lane is an example.
Counselor Rich, we'll have to get you the current list. It could have been that Lloyd's Lane was added at, at one point and then when it got added into a resurfacing project, uh, it never got pulled out. We'll have to reconcile that, certainly we're not gonna go out there and restripe something that we just paved.
I don't, so, I don't show Lloyd's Lane as one of the roadways on this striping project.
I'll go back and look, I thought I noticed it between Gerby and Cottage Hill, but I'll go back.
It's, it's now, Gerby Road is on the list.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, okay.
Good discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one one four six, authorized contract of Harris Contracting for Spanish Plaza lighting upgrades, three hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. Twenty-one one four seven, authorized contract amendment with Barner and Associates for Lad Stadium Structural Repair Phase Two, seventy-five hundred. Thirty-one one four eight, authorized a twenty-twenty-one arts, culture and community assets grant. Um, grant application to the Daniel Foundation of Alabama for mechanical upgrades to the Sanger Theater. And that's two million, no match. Twenty-seven one forty-nine, approve the use of electronic vote counting system for twenty-twenty-one municipal election. And forty, one fifty, one fifty-one, one fifty-two, one fifty-three and one fifty-four, fixing the cost of demolition of structures. Twenty-one one five five, authorized contract with Jason Eversole for medical director services for the Mobile Fire Rescue Department, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's three years. Fifty-eight one fifty-six, authorized removal of weeds, group sixteen-ten. Sixty-one fifty-seven, approved settlement agreement and release of claims, Alyssa Gamble, Noel Barat, Shontasia Bracy, and Michael and Robin Freeman. Sixty-one fifty-eight, approval for a special bonus to the Office of the Month as part of the Mayor's incentive program, Wilfredo Fernandez. Sixty-one five nine, one six zero, our determined appropriations to John LaFlore serves a public purpose and authorized payment and appropriation to the Village of Spring Hills serves a public purpose and approved payment. Sixty-one six one, establish the compensation of adjunct and acting municipal court judges. Call for public hearings, forty-one one six two, call for public hearing to rezone property located at the east terminus of Blue Ridge Boulevard extended to the west terminus of Old Dobbin Drive North, the west terminus of Harness Way, the north terminus of Creek Line Drive and the north terminus of Allendale Drive from R one and R two and B one to R one scheduled March thirtieth, announcements.
Mr. Dave, would you like to, uh, go over what would be?
Once I come down to mark stake up today, or sixty-five zero one seven. Forty, one fifty-three and one fifty-four, costs of demolition, fifty-eight, one fifty-six, weeds. Sixty-one fifty-eight, award a special bonus to the Office of the Month. Sixty-one fifty-nine, uh, discretionary appropriation to the Ford High School. And sixty-one sixty, appropriate discretionary distribution goes to Spring Hill.
Um, also, can, um, Mr. Dave, can we do twenty-seven one four nine?
The objection.
Uh, this is just, uh, we have to do, the last time we did was two thousand nine when we adopted the electronic voting systems and the county has since changed the voting machines. So we're just adopting it to adopt the new machines that they're now using.
Okay, I added it.
All right, and other council members, and announcements?
Um, yes, I need to, uh, ask, uh, Jennifer regarding our request for missing street sign at Stanton and Judge, uh, Mike Macon Drive, want to get an update on that?
We're making it, we're having to make a new one.
Okay, and I wanted to ask Nick about this splash pad in, uh, Cross Antennium Park.
Counselor, I don't have anything to do with splash pads. If you said Nick, I don't have anything to do with splash pads, Cross Antennium Park.
Okay, who, who is, who is handling the straight splash pad?
Probably, probably wouldn't, I reckon when you talk with Brad, he's.
Is Brad, is Brad present?
He's on the call, what, what's the question on it, Councilman?
Uh, I want to find out, uh, what's the status on, um, the updating the splash pad at, uh, Cross Antennium Park?
We'll, we'll, we'll get an answer back to you on, uh, on that from either Brad and or Shonda. Um, I'll shoot it back, we'll shoot you an answer today.
Okay, let me say the old splash pad has already been removed. And, um, it appeared as though they were gonna start construction, then everything stopped for the last month. Nothing, nothing has happened. So it's worth getting updated.
All right. And other, uh, council members? Do we have anything from the administration? All right, all hearts, minds clear?